Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is not called in order. In line with the bar receiver and strong saving policy of the government and the compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, I wish to advise you that adequate notice to this record's schedule meeting was sent to the Ezra Park Press and other local newspapers on January tenth, twenty twenty-three. You should assist the daytime location of this meeting over five in the notice. This meeting is open in the public. Roll call. Captain Robert Beeler? Here. Booker?
Yes, sir.
Catalana?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Kiel?
Here.
And Lundy?
Here.
All right, we're beginning with a march in the audience. If there's anybody on the line or in person I can refer, just please state your name and your address, and the floor is yours. Kevin?
Hey, everybody. Kevin Berzold, nine New Street, as you are probably well aware, as you probably got some phone calls. Our recent tax assessment came in for next year, and property values have gone up exponentially. One of the concerns that I had, I've already put in appeals for both my added assessment that I got and my yearly assessment, but across the board, I did some, I went on the Open Public Records Act, looked at some numbers here, there, and everywhere, and it seems to me that there's a little bit of unfairness going on. I understand that it's all based on comparables in your neighborhood, everything like that, but based on what I looked at on just random pics from across the town, your R two and R one and R three zones up in North Beach and South Beach only range somewhere, anywhere between sixteen to eighteen percent increase. Downtown ranged anywhere from twenty to twenty-eight percent increase across the board. The one thing I noticed was that if your house was valued over a million dollars, it was sixteen percent. If it was under a million dollars, it was twenty to twenty-eight. You know, I mean, it seems that there's a little bit of like question going on there. Then not even get into business zone, you got downtown business that district, that business district, nothing in the business district went up more than four and a half percent. When you look at, I knew you guys had a history with the beach clubs, the beach clubs, whatever, they only went up two percent, but there were three properties that are owned by the beach club that are zoned residential that went up less than two percent, one of which only went up a hundred dollars. And that's the three parking lots down here, they went up, they're zoned residential, and they still only went up less, like one went up a hundred dollars. I mean, meanwhile, the property directly next to it, which is an open lot, same situation as they are with a parking lot, back half got sixteen percent, front half, front third of that property went up a hundred and twenty-two percent. It doesn't make sense to me because I know, I know when you say your comparables, this, that, and the other thing, we got one, one house downtown that sold just outside the assessment window dates, it was just this side of the assessment window dates. That assessment came in at eight oh five. It sold just after the assessments came in at under seven. A house on North Beach, which sold inside those assessment window number dates, sold for three point four, the assessment came in two point two. It doesn't make sense to me. It seems like somebody took a shotgun, shot it at the town, and went, this is where we're at, and the majority of the hits hit downtown. I mean, you've got, you've even got a couple of marinas in town. Most of the marinas went up eleven percent. One of the marinas only went up two percent. It doesn't make sense to me. There's no rhyme or reason to it, and I just question what's going on and if something, if something can be done. I realize that at this point, there's probably nothing that we can do based on the book that has been submitted and everything like that, but beside, you know, if there is nothing we can do, and I know that the tax rate hasn't come in yet, and that's really going to determine what our, what we pay on our taxes for two thousand twenty-four, but that being said, and with everything being said, your tax, your tax income last year was over a billion dollars. If you go at the low average there of sixteen percent, what are you planning on doing with that a hundred and seventy-six million dollars that you plan on getting next year if you keep the existing tax rate? So that's all I have to say. I just, something's amiss, and I think somebody should look into it a little bit.
Yeah, I did look around in town, thanked you for the research, and it's interesting. Because I know it's pretty big down downtown.
Yeah, I also have one other thing separate. Why the increase on the beach passes before, before the new year? Why the twenty-five dollar increase? I mean, again, if I was a conspiracy theorist, taking that and the taxes in town, I'd say you're trying to push the middle class out. I mean, that's what it sounds like to me. I mean, twenty, you raised, you raised the price for pretty much the locals. It's not the local price, but the early price for beach, beach passes has always been fifty dollars if you got it before Christmas or before the new year. And you just raised it to seventy-five bucks.
That don't really have any impact over the tax issue.
No, I know, that's separate, completely separate thing. What I'm saying, if somebody were to look at this from, you know, conspiracy theorists are coming here and look at this and look at all these things and these numbers, they could go, I think you're trying to push out the middle class, so. My statement.
No, thanks for sharing, folks. Good to have that, because I haven't had time to research those different pockets and that.
Yeah, I mean, you can look it up on the public records. Everything's there, and you can just grab some numbers, grab some random houses here or there. I have a neighbor's house that was, that, I have a neighbor's house that was sold in almost all of downtown at twenty to twenty, twenty-eight percent. I have one neighbor's house that was already over a million dollars, only went up sixteen percent.
Tim is coming to our next workshop in January, if you'd like to stop over.
I've already spoken with him, and every thing that I've stated to him, he gave me kind of a runaround answer that didn't answer anything. And so I'm conscious, you know, part of me wants to question his capabilities at this point because I was just like, don't, you know, it's insane. So I made my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Combs, I live at fourteen eighty-six Ocean Avenue, I have a similar issue. Sixty-six years old, first of all, I was shocked because now they raised my property taxes, my valuation from a million four to two million four. And my neighbor, my neighbor, I mean, it's insane. My taxes are going to double, I don't know what, how, I have to sell my house now. It's insane. I went to see Tim, and he goes, well, there's nothing I can do, they forced me to do it. Really, your house is worth a million six, but I put it on two million four, because another house sold for three million, but it's a half a mile away from your house, it's on the ocean, it has, it has ocean lights. I don't see anything. I'm totally blocked in. He put my lot at a million five. The dentist, which is next door, his lot is twice the size of mine, and he's eight hundred thousand dollars. I can't sleep at night thinking about this, but I went to see Tim, and he goes, well, appeal. So I appeal. Let's say I get a reduction, then I have to pay an attorney because of his negligence or whatever it may be. My neighbor's house was built the same day and delivered the same day as mine. He has a thousand more square feet. He has river views, but he put my house the same value as his house. It's impossible. His numbers don't make sense. I looked all around the neighborhood, I looked, people behind me, I paid nine hundred thousand for my house. The same, the same month, another guy bought a house for a million six, but his house is appraised four hundred thousand dollars less than my house now. It used to be appraised three hundred thousand more. He went from a million eight to two million one, because I guess things went up eighteen percent. But to bring me, bring me from a million four to two million four, and I asked him to review it again, he didn't understand, why? Why should you have to challenge it? That's not fair. I lived in northern towns. If you had a real issue like that, they would adjust. He, he says, oh, your bathrooms are brand new. You guys did, you went from house to house. I cooperated, I had a filming done on my house like everybody else did, but he, did they, did they use that? I don't understand how we could have praised my house the way he did, and why do I have to? Now I have to go to appeal and go to someone in Monmouth, in Monmouth County who doesn't know our area, right? They don't know our area. They don't know that I'm blocked in by Driftwood, and I have no river views. So I have a lot that's the size of a postage stamp, and he put it at a million five. It's just crazy. That's all I have to say.
Jerry Keane, five New Street, just two questions. When will the budget be available to look at where the money's going to be spent? And if you could add some color today on what large projects we're looking at next year that's driving the increase?
Well, maybe I'll ask Mike Bastamore, CFO, to answer those questions. The budget is approved already. It was approved four or five months ago, maybe even longer.
Of the twenty twenty-three budget?
Correct.
We're talking, we're naming on the twenty twenty-three budget, you know, twelve days and that ends.
The twenty twenty-four will be developed during the first quarter of the year.
Okay.
So we haven't developed that budget as of yet.
Is that available upstairs at some point in time?
Oh, yeah, it'll be available.
It'll be available, and introduction, which will probably be linked on our, possibly on the march.
But generally, can you share some color on?
Well, the assessment was somewhat of an argument between our tax assessor and Monmouth County tax assessor, the county tax assessor. I'm not sure of the dynamics of it, but they don't want the town as a whole to fall below ninety-five percent of what the sales have been. So Mr. Infuso, he sent in his book with what he thought was fair, and they, they refused it. They said they would not certify those numbers. He adjusted it a second time, I believe, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't accept those numbers. The third time, they imposed an increase on, on the town, the county board of taxation. So while Tim has to defend both our side and their side, because he technically is under the county board of taxation, you know, it went up, and there are net inequities in this, in this system, that's what going through.
Yeah, but what do we do? So I have to spend money, and I have to fire a lawyer. I mean, doesn't the town care that people, I mean, it's, I've been a senior citizen, I've never paid my taxes, but to go up six, seventy-five percent in one year on my taxes, it's criminal. I mean, it seems like a mafia is running this town.
Joe, can I make a couple comments? Next. I can tell you, everybody on this day is, cares and is concerned about the point that you're raising, because we all live here, and it's affecting all of us, maybe in different ways and different percentages. But just to add a little bit of context to what Joe just said, Tim submitted his recommendation for assessment, it was rejected by Monmouth County as being too low. He resubmitted it, it was rejected again, it was too low. There, Monmouth County is adding a number on top of that which is driving this, and the thing we have to keep in mind is there's three major components that make up our tax rate. It's our municipal tax, it's what we have to pay to the county, and it's what we have to pay to the school system. Until the assessed values get beat against the tax rate, you don't know what the municipal portion of your taxes are.
Sir, if my taxes went up to two million four, and my neighbor's at one point six, and his house is twice the size of mine, there's something wrong. I don't care how he submitted it, he calculated it wrong.
Okay, my intent is not to address individual cases here, because I can assure you, everybody in this room and everybody around the table has a similar concern to it even. I do myself, I won't go into my numbers, but I do myself, similar situation happened, and I'm questioning. We, in this town, can only adjust our municipal rate a cap of two to two and a half percent per year. So if the assessed value goes up, we have to reduce our tax rate to answer that. And that's a process that's ongoing right now. What concerns me, besides what we're all paying, is the fact that the part that goes to Monmouth County does not get adjusted the same way I just described for the municipal rate. And the other issue is the equalized value of the town, to Mr. Berzold's point, is when the equalized value gets calculated on the town, if it goes from a billion to a billion three, that gets used for school formula calculations. And we already have a challenging school situation. So we're going to work on the budget, as Mr. Bastam said, we're going to look to try to get that nailed down by February, March, early, so we can define what's going to happen in twenty twenty-four. To answer the gentleman's question back there, we have not finalized the twenty twenty-four project yet as to what the major capital investments are. There are some that have been pre-approved that are ongoing, whether it be the fact that we purchased a new fire truck, whether it be the building on some roads, there's a number that has been approved already, but the ones for the twenty twenty-four plan are in discussion and have not been finalized yet. But I don't want anybody in the room to have the impression that anybody sitting on here is not concerned about the issue that's being raised. And in fact, the lead in trying to work with this is Tim Infuso, trying to get adjustments and fair values for the things that are being put on. The bottom line, and I'm only telling, the bottom line problem we have right now is people are coming in and paying exorbitant prices for houses in this town. And when the comps sit there, I'll just speak for myself, the comps are sure about my calculation, and there's nothing I can do about it, because people were willing to come into the town and pay twenty, thirty, forty percent over what the number was a year ago. That comes what's used for the calculation. And if any of us go on Zillow and put our address in, we're going to be surprised by the number that's sitting there, because that number is defined from comps in the area.
But that number on Zillow, seven hundred thousand dollars, he valued my house.
I, I just, I'm not going to.
I know you don't want to go into it, okay, fine. I wasted my time.
No, the point is, the point is, you said it's like the mafia.
It was, it's a crazy, it's a crazy situation. It's a crazy situation where it's, he knows that it's wrong, and he won't adjust. Okay, other towns, they adjust. If there's a mistake made, they adjust.
Well, I, I believe in the end. My, my first reaction was to the view that says, we don't care. That is absolutely not.
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying you.
And then secondly, we are concerned about the issue and are asking in our workshop to roll up our sleeves and get a better feeling of what's going on, because we agree it's moving in the wrong direction, and we don't understand why. So we've got to get to the bottom line. The only thing I would ask is if you can say something, just come up, and I don't know whether or not we have time or we can sign everybody here.
So Kevin Berzold, again.
Just, we got to do it so people can keep you up there online.
So Kevin Berzold, again, just to your point, when do you guys, when do you guys plan on having the tax rate finalized? I mean, because I know that's going to really determine where we are as far as the taxes that we pay on our new assessments.
It takes a while, Kevin, only because the county waits for every municipality to prepare their budget and pass it before they set the, set the total rate. Am I correct, Mike?
That's, that's correct. So you have a number of steps here. At first, and just to be very clear, the budget isn't set based on the assessment. So if you have a billion dollars in new assessments, that doesn't mean the budget goes up.
Right.
The budget is still, as Erwin stated before, budget driven by the amount we need to operate municipality, and it's capped by what we're allowed to increase each year. So even if the assessment values went up a hundred percent, we're still capped at a two percent increase in the tax level. And then that levy would just be divided differently amongst the values based upon who went up more than the average, you know, who went up at the average and who went up below the average. But the, the overhaul tax rate, so we'll know what the municipal tax rate is within a hundredth of a penny by late April, and, but we won't know the entire tax rate to include the county, the school districts until mid-June at best.
So then, so here's my question, there's another clarified question then. So we have to have an appeal for our tax assessment in by January first, but we won't know what we're actually going to be paying on our taxes until April.
But, but just for this, Kevin, you appeal based on the assessment, not on your taxes. You cannot win a tax appeal just over how much your taxes run.
Right, no, no, no. I realize that. We're appealing the assessed, the assessed value. So, but we're appealing, granted, I understand that the houses, the housing car prices in this town are going up for exact same reasons, some people are coming in and buying at ridiculous prices, and that makes sense, and I understand that portion of it. But the problem is, is right now, with, if the taxes go up at the, if the tax rate stays where it is, and these exorbitant prices go up, then, I mean, you just said, you just said, you just said your budget doesn't change. So you need X amount of millions of dollars to run this town and whatever, so now you're getting another, if you, if the tax rate stays the same, you're getting almost two hundred million dollars for extra, where does that twenty million go?
Tax rate can't stay the same. When you have that type of increase in such value, the tax rate will go down. You can't stay the same.
Right, that tax rate's going to have to come down from one point zero one nine, or it is right now, down to under six or seven, point six or seven, in order to equalize the cost there. I mean, and the chances of that happening, I mean, we've only ever been as low as point eight, I think.
Kevin, to be very clear on what Mike was saying, when the assessed value goes up, because the municipal budget is capped at two and a half percent, the rate automatically comes out of that formula.
No, I realize that, I realize that.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is if the tax rate stays the same and the assessment goes up, that's not going to happen?
No, the assessment goes up and the tax, but I get it, the tax, no, I understand the tax rate's going to come down. But my point, my point is, if we feel that our assessed value is insane, but the tax rate comes down to a point where it's like, all right, whatever, it's fine, because it's not really going to kill me on my taxes, because the tax rate has equalized and everything's fine, now instead of paying, what, like my house right now, if, if the tax rate stays the same, my house, my taxes go up from six thousand to ten thousand dollars a year. So if that tax rate comes down, and I'm still paying six thousand dollars a year in April, I'm fine. It doesn't matter how much my house is worth. But my point is, I don't have the option to appeal it until, I have to appeal it by January first. I have to appeal that value by January first because I feel it's insane. And now I have to hire a lawyer, or somebody has to, we have to hire a lawyer to go in and say, listen, this is, I feel this is incorrect, we have to look for comparables in the area that we feel are correct, which, as you know, are slim and hard to find, because like you said, people are paying insane prices for these houses. So again, we're in a catch-twenty-two situation. I can't, I have to appeal it by January first, otherwise I'm stuck with whatever tax rate comes out in April, and my taxes go up, and I'm stuck, and that's what I have to pay through April of next year on my taxes.
I understand everything you're saying, and again, everybody in this room, that side and this side is concerned about this. And to me, the one thing an individual can do is if they believe the comparables on recently sold properties in their area that are relevant are significantly below what they're assessed at, then they have to appeal that, and they have to do it, as Mike said, you're appealing against the assessed value, not against your taxes.
I realize that.
We're, we're all sitting here in the same boat right now. I took the three comps on my block.
Technically not, because you're at sixteen percent, I'm at twenty-eight percent. So, yes, I've already, I've already run the numbers on everyone in town, on every one of the people in this room, and some, some that I know are involved in the politics in this town, and I know where the numbers are. So no, you're not in the same boat as some of them.
Kevin, it's public records.
I know it is.
Kevin, let me finish. It's public record, in two years, my taxes have gone up, my assessment's gone fifty percent in two years. So don't tell me I'm not in the same.
Right, and look, look at the neighborhood you live in. You live in, you know, you live in a two million, three million, the, the house on your block owned for six million dollars right now.
It's, the point I'm trying to make is that for us to get into each as an individuals is not appropriate, because we don't have that insight. But what we do understand is how the system works and how the taxation works.
All of them saying, he's not exactly the same thing that you and everyone else is doing.
I realize, but I'm just saying, it, it, it seems to be, you're, you're driving out, you're going to drive out all the retirees, you're going to drive out all the middle class, you're going to get to a point where nobody, where nobody lives in this town in the off-season because it's all sold to LLCs, and people that are renting them out will be to Airbnb's. That's all, that's all that's going to live here in the off-season, in the next five years, if this continues. So I said, Mike, this is.
Next, Kevin. Would anyone else have a speak tonight? Anybody?
No.
Oh, hello.
This is another issue. There's only issues. I'm sorry that I have.
Say your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara Adler, and I live at six fifty-six Ocean Avenue. And I actually think it's a shame that I have to come here tonight. About two years ago, we recognized that we were having a really big problem with a storm drain. The state owns this thing, so the river in the ocean. So what my husband did is he called somebody in town who's in the, I forget what department it is, Public Works. And the gentleman came from Public Works, not my job, or we don't have anything to do with this, you know, this is the state. So my husband got a number from the state, he did give him a number for somebody to call, and my husband did call the state. Of course, everybody's out in the field. We don't know which field that people are in, but they're certainly out in the field somewhere. I guess they come in to get, collect their salaries. After many, many calls, he got somebody to call him back, and the guy said, definitely going to take care of this. Nothing happened for over a year. We lost some of the paperwork. I called again, I called the, the, I can't recall forgetting the name of the people, the same guy, anyway, called him, and I said, we're not hearing anything. And he said, well, maybe I could call or something, or whatever. Of course, we never heard anything, and then I got into it, and I said, we got to fix this. So I called again, and I got somebody at the state who said that they were sending somebody in, and somebody would come to fix it. Meanwhile, the water keeps on coming closer and closer. Not only does the water come closer and closer, but because it doesn't drain properly, in the summertime, we have an insect problem there. And the water now is almost up to where the, where the, in fact, sometimes it actually comes over into the driveway. I then, one day, I was sitting there, and I saw a guy come with a pad.
He did.
So I ran out, I was all excited. I said, who are you? He said, well, I've been hired by the town. So I said, well, you know, are you going to fix this? He said, oh, yeah, you, you're, you have a big problem, and you have a couple of other people with a problem. It's supposed to be thirty-six inches, you don't even have an inch there. So I thought, oh, that's great, somebody's going to come and fix it. Well, I never heard from anybody again, so then I called, and you said that you would call me back. I don't hear any ring, no ring. So I call again, no ring, still no ring. So then I go to the office, where there are three people, because everyone else is out in the field. I spoke to someone who I think works with you, a woman, explained the whole situation to her. Certainly, I thought that I would get a call. I pay almost twenty thousand dollars a year in taxes, we have a town of fifteen, almost fifteen hundred people, maybe fifteen thirty-five, is what I looked at, twenty-four people working for the town. I shouldn't have to come here, and you should have called me. Shame on you. So now we still have the same problem that we've had for two and a half years ago, and it's really a shame, we have all of these people here, and all this beautiful building. I had to call Brian, I bothered him one day, I asked him to do something, he was in the mix too. He told me, contact Joe. So I did. So I did everything I'm supposed to do, and I still don't have, I don't, I don't care whose problem it is. I, at a minimum, somebody should have called me back, and nobody did. So that is, that is a no-no. I, I cannot tolerate that. I cannot tolerate that, not, not what I'm paying for taxes, and we're only left in fifteen hundred people here. Certainly, you have some time to give one of the resident. It's, it's rude, and it's uncalled for, and it should not be happening, and all of you should be sure that anybody who's working for our town, if somebody calls in this town, they ought to be responded to. You owe me that call. So I want somebody to address this issue, to tell us a timeline, who was it that came with the, with the, with the pad and took all the notes? Who was it? I still don't know who that is. And I don't want to have to come, I'll come here for, for important things. This is an important thing that people are talking about, but the story, it's not important enough, it should have been handled right away, and nobody did handle it.
Yeah, Barbara, all right, so Joe does have an event, but I'll, we'll give you a call tomorrow, so I will give you updated, you know, with the statuses on that. I know you've been in touch with the state on this one.
Well, I had to call Senator O'Scanlon to try to get us a meeting with the state. Still haven't gotten a meeting with the state to talk about the issue, and I apologize for not getting back to you, but I don't have any answer. I had to call the senator.
An answer is, I called, this is what happened, you called me back.
Okay, I apologize, I, I.
Not once, not one, twice, at least twice, I called you and didn't get a response. And then I went and I brought myself to the office and told, spoke to a woman there, Christine, I think, took all the information, and still didn't hear anything. Christine, did I speak to you? Okay, so, so I look familiar to you. Yes, okay, and I thought for sure I'm going to hear something. When was that? Two months ago? So, Merry Christmas.
Barbara, I'm sorry for the delay in that, but we'll, we'll check in with Declan and Stephen, gave another update for you.
Everybody heard that, right?
Yeah, thanks, Barbara. Anybody else in here that can be heard tonight? Anybody online that? Yeah, sure.
Just speaking.
Yes. Yes. Can you see?
Anderson, 8 Center Street. Uh, guys, I, I, I would like to hear from you guys because we've heard over the years how, oh, we kept the budget under the cap, kept the budget under the cap. Um, that we keep the budget, the municipal side of it, that you can control near the inflation rates. And that's a, that's a tough thing. So we don't go out doing a lot of crazy stuff. Uh, and as far as the assessments go, I'm living with my wife in the house. Both floors are falling in. The, the burlough constructed. They're engineering the, you know, firm that they hired. Their builder that they hired did this damage to our home. We went and fought our assessment, but our property value keeps pace with our neighbors. Even though we have a first floor that we can't really live in, no kitchen cabinets, no floors. We're walking around on subfloors, no sheetrock. The house is now deflected three inches in the center. So when people speak about problems here in community, I don't see it and I haven't seen it. And the thing is, you guys know what you did. Some people sitting here know exactly the situation and have done nothing. That's my story. Have a good night.
Three minutes, everybody. Thanks. Three minutes. Anybody else? Is there anyone in line to speak? All right, well, thanks, uh, thanks for speaking over the day. No, no happy stories here. Sorry, guys. And, you know, hopefully, you know, hopefully the fields work out to a degree. You know, I don't know if you forgot that one. I'll make a few remarks on that one, but, uh, it was a stupid question. But, uh, thanks for your comments and we'll talk to you later. Um, all right, we'll be on to the consent agenda.
Thanks, guys.
All right, goodnight, guys.
Hey, Mr. Trump.
Yeah.
I think I have a motion to remove, number 188 from the consent agenda. So you met yourself at a little corner.
All right.
And then I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
All right, you have the second one?
I'm sorry. What is the number 188 for?
To raise the sale of our property based on.
For our next list.
Per, do we have to explain why we're removing it or no?
Same for.
No. Yes, no, it's moving after second vote. Okay. It's gonna be voted on secondly, so it's still gonna be voted on.
By the way, the motion is there second on the balance of the consent.
Second. All right, so there was a motion to, uh, vote on the, the balance of the consent agenda minus number 188. So, uh, let's see. Councilmember Bieber?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Catelana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killa?
Yes.
And Lamy?
Yes.
All right, so the consent agenda passes minus 188. Would anyone make a motion on resolution number 188? About all files and sell of our property based on block 22, block 4, our line.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm confused.
That's the power in property.
Yeah, we, we separated from consent.
You were voting, now you're voting individually.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Just as one resolution.
That was up there to me. I'll second that.
All right, so on resolution 188, yeah, we'll call. Councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Catelana?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Killa?
No.
And Lamy?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, resolution 188 passes. Now we're going on to our first ordinance, ordinance number 162023, an ordinance of the Bar of Seabright by chapter 107, fire pitch to the code. It'd be Bar of Seabright. Would anyone like to make a motion to open a public hearing on ordinance number 162023?
So.
All right, councilmember Bieber?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Catelana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killa?
Yes.
And, um, all right, would anybody like to, uh, be heard on ordinance 162023? And, uh, all right, would anybody make a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 162023?
So.
Councilmember Bieber?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Catelana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killa?
Yes.
And Lamy?
Yes.
All right, would anybody make a motion to close the public hearing? Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance 162023? All right, councilmember Bieber?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Catelana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killa?
Yes.
And Lamy? All right, ordinance 162023 was adopted. We're on to individual action, uh, new business vouchers in the amount of $568,308.8. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve this voucher list?
So. Second.
All right, councilmember Bieber?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Catelana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killa?
Yes.
And Lamy?
Yes.
All right, the voucher list has been approved. All right, so we're moving on now to mayor and council comments. Uh, Mike can give a few quick updates. Uh, I know we heard from our, uh, special attorneys for schooling, Abino Carey, uh, this week and the, uh, the appeal, uh, by, uh, Oceanport Shore Regional. The appeals, uh, were dismissed by its Superior Court of New Jersey. So those were motions were, uh, the motions to dismiss were granted. Uh, we have some good news, I believe, yesterday. Frank Lawrence, who we've been working on for years and years between now and, uh, four months, uh, years after Sandy, FEMA, uh, approved of our reimbursement request for, um, all the volunteers' efforts that were documented for, and it was kind of, Frank did a great job of it because that was like, you know, that was just like a joy story, but just keeping track of all the volunteer hours for quite a long time in the years after Sandy. So he basically did textbooks, submitted everything and then, uh, New Jersey, Oregon, they're notified that FEMA approved of it. So probably sometime in January, I think we should, uh, get a, a re- a reimbursement for about $456,000.
That's nice.
Yeah, they, they reimbursed a 90% of the request. So I think our request is around 507.
Yeah, right.
And yeah, and, uh, as I said, I spoke to you about it earlier. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of towns didn't do it or didn't do it correctly. And, uh, you know, Frank and the folks who helped him, uh, kind of painstakingly documented everything and paid off. So that was nice.
This was fine.
It is, yep. It came from FEMA and they notified, uh, State of Oregon today, Florida yesterday.
That's great.
Yeah, that's good news.
Mike, do you know the number here?
I'm ahead of it.
What the, the amount?
Yeah.
But that's a $456,000.
$456.
Yeah, $456,348.46.
Do I have to collect the, the monthly payment?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think Frank said usually it gets paid out in four to six weeks. So that was in January. Yeah. But, uh, uh, let's see. Yeah, the, uh, I will.
Got you.
The, uh, so yeah, so let's thank Jeff Solomon Grant right now. This is, uh, the last meeting of his term. So we all wanted to thank Jeff for your service for the last three years, all, all your volunteer efforts and helping us through all of our meetings and agendas and all your work they've done for the town. So thanks again, Jeff. I'll see you soon out there. But, uh, you know, the governing body has a nice little, uh, thank you card here for you and a little gift card in it that we hope you enjoy. And, uh, but we all wanted to thank you again for taking a lot of time out of your life the last three years to dedicate it to Seabright.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'm grateful to the residents of Seabright for the opportunity to serve. Um, I enjoyed my time with council and, um, I enjoyed working with all people. Um, voters have rendered a different decision and we respect that. Um, so I, I, uh, I'll, I'll be in town and be around. Um, I'm not, not, not going to disappear from the area, so I look forward to working with you all as an opportunity, Mayor Rob. Uh, and hopefully the bottom of town. So again, thank you all, uh, for, uh, your courage and your working with me. Uh, and I appreciate the, the, the staff and other members of the community. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks again, Jeff. Uh, also we have, uh, on, uh, let's see, the date, January 6th, I believe, is our next public, uh, not the next public meeting, but the actually the first public meeting of the year, reorganization, 10:30 in the morning. So feel free to come on out. Kind of goes the rebirth of our town. So we have Saturday, January 6th, 10:30. And, uh, and thanks to all of our departments again this year. We did a great 2023 overall. So police, fire, first aid, our office, our administration, Public Works, they already did a great job of Star Beach. Uh, so, you know, thanks for having a great year and, uh, hopefully, uh, 2024 is that good. Uh, aside from that, you know, season's bringing to everybody, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years and, uh, and the rest of the council, let this speak to their committees.
Mayor, I've got a couple of things, real quick. Uh, just an update on the work that we're doing in Anchorage Park. Councilman Lamy and I completed the first phase of the train pavilion. If you remember, this is a three-section thing that we're doing. Uh, very happy with the kit that we got, that we purchased through both donations as well as matching funds from Monmouth Conservation. Uh, the next step is we're gonna be attaching the two wings, the left and right side, north and south of the pavilion that look very familiar, but we're trying to replicate, as you recall, what the old train station looked at. The reason we had to delay those was because they required updates to the capital permitting from what was originally there. So that's being worked on. Frank and our engineers are working on that. Early spring, we'll be starting the construction of those two wings off the side. And during the winter and into the spring, we're gonna be looking for a series of nice training features to sort of deck it out as an old train station, making it look as similar to the original train stations we possibly can. So the plan is by the summer, that's gonna be a nice little attraction for people to have photographs taken. Maybe some music being played there and other things. But I want to thank councilman Lamy for a lot of our work over the last couple of weeks on that. Second thing on the planning board, I serve on behalf of the council on the planning board, which has been a pleasure again this year. Um, Q4 was pretty quiet. Uh, we actually had to cancel a couple of meetings because we didn't have enough applicants. So, uh, not a lot going on. The majority of the applications that we had during the last quarter were predominantly private residents, um, either teardowns and replace or expansions or elevations and things of that nature. There was nothing controversial during the quarter, I would say, overall, that took place. A couple of commercial things that took place. We approved Woody's final expansion on the planning board. We just approved a canopy down the driftwood, but well attended by the board, no significant issues. And, uh, you know, as we all know, the town is very much developed at this point. So there's not a lot more space for people to be putting, putting on new things. On behalf.
Every time we say it, there's something passed up.
Yeah, exactly. On behalf of the personnel committee, uh, we've been doing a lot of work around succession planning for our leadership team, uh, most significantly of which comes January, we're beginning the process of posting for the position for business administrator. Joe Rooney, our administrator, who has been incredibly fortunate to have since Sandy and has done a great job. The town's gonna be retiring, uh, sometime in the first half of next year. So we're gonna post that position. We'll look for applications in the January timeframe. Probably, uh, we'll, we'll meet as a council and talk about how we're gonna conduct the interview and selection process. That'll go through February and then sometime around the March timeframe, hopefully have a, a new candidate in place for an overlap period with Joe. So there can be some mentoring and orientation for whether that new BA is going forward. Uh, but once again, thank Joe for his incredible service and dedication to the town. And again, like you said, Mayor, happy holidays to everybody. Happy, Merry Christmas, happy, non-afraid, safe, happy new year. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
I just want to offer, the, uh, first aid has a new structure and, uh, chest compressors and, uh, questions we want to do then on our reorganization day when public is there, show. But just, I don't need an answer tonight, but.
Okay.
Considered because, uh, I think people, if they see it, it comes appreciated, uh, especially their chest compressor. Um, that's very important. If somebody in your home or in your family is having trouble breathing, something, you wanna get that call and, and not just say, "Well, I'm going to the hospital," it's better to get the first aid there. Cause that's the difference between a full recovery and, so, so. Just letting you know.
All right, sounds good.
We got some gift bits for your urine. You know, last night I met with Senator O'Scanlon to ask for his help to get the empty to sit down with and get to the bottom of this. Uh, I know it's late, I'm as frustrated as you are, not the only man that actually needs. But I'm responsible for Public Works this year, so if you reach out to me, I promise you I'll be back.
And I know it's tech and good, living in the computer.
We put it in as a little thing that everyone, but I was such a reception today as well.
Is it?
Jack and I have both been pounded it to try to, that's not the only area where we have a concern. And, uh, we need help because it's a state highway.
All right, there, Jeff. You guys listening? From Stanis Farmers, I bet.
Just a reminder, we have our indoor farmers market.
I'm waiting for that. I didn't put your gun there.
So just keep, bring friends. I appreciate anyone who's introducing it to other towns. Um, we are getting a bunch of people from high, local islands in the island of Smiling Beach. So the word is, is getting out. Um, and so I've also reached out to Lori Draw from the journal, hoping that she'll come through and do kind of a tour. And also it's the same day that the Historical Society is opening. So shop the market, take a look at the Historical Society. It's just a great opportunity to also get people into the Recreation Center because we are opening that. Um, and there's a lot of potential in those walls. So excited to see, keep the momentum going into 2024 there.
Small, I agree.
That's, tomorrow's Wednesday. Yes. From 1 to 6.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys. Thanks for coming out tonight. Had a tough meeting. Sorry, sort of bad news there, but, um, yeah, make a motion to adjourn. Anybody? Anybody make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second. All right, councilmember Bieber?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Catelana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killa?
Yes.
And Lamy? All right, I'm ready to everybody. Me is.